Hello everyone, hope you're doing well. My name is Zain Imam and I'm the lead of civic engagement here at the East Plano Islamic Center. Today, we're very excited to be hosting a candidate forum with some candidates for Plano City Council Mayor election coming up on May 1st. We have a great number of candidates here, a great variety, all with different ideas about the future of our great city and the city that we call home. And to get started, we're going to have a live Q and A on slido.com. And then we'll be asking these candidates a variety of questions about important issues affecting the city, and then we also have more specific questions for these candidates. Before we get started, I just want to pass it over to Samir Siddiqui, the Vice President here at East Plano Islamic Center.
Thank you, Zain. I'd like to begin with this Islamic greeting. Assalamu alaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. May the peace, mercy, and blessing of Almighty God be with you all. On behalf of our management, religious leadership, and the community of the East Plano Islamic Center, I would like to thank you and welcome you all to this candidate forum. As you know, the community of Epic is very diverse and very active. The purpose of this forum is to allow them to get to know you by listening to you, asking questions, and getting answers from you, and make an informed decision in the upcoming elections. Once again, I would like to thank you all for taking time from your busy schedule and wish you all the best. Thank you. Back to you, Zain.
As Samir said, thank you again, candidates, for joining us, taking time out of your busy schedules campaigning. We're really grateful for your attendance here. And without further ado, we'll get right to introductions. So we're going to give everyone one minute to introduce themselves. You can take it however you want. Tell us about yourself, what you want to do for the city, what you're running for. And so we're just going to go in order. So Stephen Levine will start with you. You have one minute to give an introduction.
Thank you to Epic for sponsoring this gathering, and thanks to all of you who came out today to learn about us. I'm Steve Levine. My family settled in Plano 38 years ago. We sent our boys to Plano schools. Their education, extracurricular opportunities and such propelled them into great colleges and good careers. I've served on the library advisory board, much of that as chairman, and on the Parks and Recreation Board. I'm a proud graduate of Leadership Plano Class 28 and the Plano Citizens Academy. I've served our Plano youth for over 25 years as a volunteer with the Boy Scouts, and I currently serve as a board member for Plano Youth Leadership and the Friends of the Plano Library. I just completed six years as president of my homeowners association, Windhaven, one of Plano's most diverse neighborhoods. I'm proud of the strong support I've received from my Pakistani-American neighbors, many of whom I've worked with for several years, as well as the American-Pakistani Public Affairs Committee. I look forward to answering questions today and to speaking about my support for a greater voice for our minority populations. Thank you.
Stephen, thank you so much, and I apologize for mispronouncing your last name. Stephen Levine, everyone. Lydia Ortega, your next. You have one minute to introduce yourself. Please go ahead.
So there's a lot of information on my website about my experience and my qualifications for this job. I just want to share with you very quickly, an interesting question I received from a voter. She asked me, "How can I trust you not to California, my Texas?" I'm from California, a refugee from that dysfunctional state. And her question surprised me, because when I came to Texas, I found out the cancel culture is already here. Don't blame me, it was here when I got here. It's in our colleges, it's in the K through 12 education system, and it's even in businesses, where employees keep their cards close to their vest, not because it's policy of the company or because they're trying to be polite, but because they fear repercussions. This is cancel culture at its earliest stages, but it metastasizes and grows quickly. You need a leader who knows what it looks like, who knows how to fight it, and who's unafraid to challenge it, because I have nowhere else to go. California is gone, I need my home in Plano to be free, to be a "don't mess with me" Texas county of just excellence. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much, Lydia. Next, Julie Homer, you have a minute to introduce yourself. Please go ahead.
Good afternoon, thank you for having me. I apologize for my casualness, I just came back from block walking. I moved to Plano, my family moved here in 1981 from abroad. My father took a job with Arco, which is what brought us to Plano. So I grew up going to Plano schools, Sigler, Wilson, Vines, and then Plano Senior High. And once I graduated, I went off to college for four years, and then I came right back to Plano so that I could start my career here, and eventually my family here. My husband and I have two boys that attend Carpenter and Clark, and I'm actively involved in the PTAs as a board member, as a volunteer. I'm also a Leadership Plano graduate and a graduate of the Citizens Police and Fire Academy. I've served in many capacities on different nonprofit boards in my community. My husband and I have a software consulting business we've had since 2002, and in 2011 we opened a business in downtown Plano, a restaurant. So I've owned a brick and mortar, I know the challenges of running a business and navigating, getting permits and COs, and all of those things that we are challenged with as business owners. So I will be an advocate for small business owners. I'm very proud of the very diverse bipartisan support you'll find on my endorsement page. And if you would like to donate to my campaign or volunteer to get involved, my website is julieforplano.com. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much, Julie. Next, Vidal, you'll have one minute to introduce yourself. Please go ahead.
Am I unmuted?
Yes, you are. Go ahead.
Perfect. Thank you, Zain. I am Vidal Quintanilla, and I'm originally from South-South Texas. I have a bachelor's degree in Business Administration with a concentration in HR and a master's degree in Public Health. I'm currently Executive Director of Human Resources, and I oversee the day-to-day HR operations, and I'm basically responsible for the equivalent to the size of City of Plano's employee count and its budgetary infrastructure. I am the only candidate with a public health background, which is highly needed for the future in regards to epidemiology, population density, and emergency preparedness. And I am also a Latino, a minority in the community, and I am proud to be running for Plano Place Four. Thank you.
Thank you, Vidal. Next, John Munz. Please go ahead, sir, you'll have one minute.
Thank you. My name's John Munz, and I'm running for mayor of the city of Plano. Plano's been my home for over 50 years, and I've raised a family and created a business here in Plano. I served on the PISD School Board for 16 years, three of which I was president of the board, and in the last six years, I've been Chair of the Planning and Zoning Commission for the city of Plano. I was on Leadership Plano Class 6, and it was a long time ago, and I've served on many boards, including Children's Medical Center, City House, and many others here in Plano. I'm running for mayor to serve all the residents of Plano and to make sure that Plano continues to be the city of excellence.
Thank you, John. Next, David Smith, you'll have one minute to introduce yourself. Please go ahead.
Good afternoon, I'm David Smith. I seek to return to Plano City Council Place Seven. I have 31 years of civic engagement here in Plano, including six years on the city council, and I'd like to use my minute to talk about why I want to return and what I would like to do when I come back. I'd like to help transform the council into a more active council, no disrespect for incumbents that are part of this forum, but council has recently become relatively passive and redlocked at times. And with the help of others who you will elect, we need to become a united council that's going to address the major issues that currently face us, includes the pandemic, the financial recovery for the community as well as the city, and addressing racism and bigotry that is endemic in our society. I've worked with many of you all in recent years in reacting to things such as the attempt to overturn the city equal rights ordinance and mounting a recall petition campaign when a council member made some Islamophobic and racist posts. Again, we've been reacting. Moving forward, we want to become proactive. Your city council members and others need to become leaders in addressing this and other issues. I've been working as part of the lay leadership of the United Methodist Church area. We're rolling out a journey toward racial justice initiative to all our churches this summer, and I would look forward to drawing from that as well as other good initiatives and see what we can do here community-wide. I'll look forward to some of your questions later. Don't forget to mention that there's a ton of information about me at my website, which is davidforallplano.com.
Thank you so much, David. Next, Justin Adcock. The floor is yours, you have one minute to introduce yourself.
Thank you. First, I want to thank Epic as well as Zain and Samir for having us today. I'm a husband, I'm a father of four, I'm a small business owner, and over the last two months, when I'm out block walking or meeting with people, I've had a lot of success because the issues that I'm talking about are important to everyone, no matter your race, religion, gender, or income, or other background. Those priorities include reducing the tax burdens on citizens. People are getting priced out of their homes due to increased assessments and taxes. Prioritizing a safe city where people feel and are safe, to limit high-density developments that have adverse effects on our neighborhoods, and reduce the quality of life for nearby residents. My goal is to create a city with an atmosphere that allows all people and businesses to succeed. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much, Justin. Next, we have Lily Bowe. Lily, please go ahead, you have one minute to introduce yourself.
Hi, how are you, everybody? Greetings. My name is Lily Bowe. I have the privilege of serving all of you on Plano City Council. I'm the only person in my race that has council experience. I came to America 30 years ago in 1991. I am a first-generation immigrant, like most of you. I have volunteered and served on many boards and commissions before I became a council member. I've served on PISD Diversity Advisory Board, Collin County Myers Park, and Event Center Diversity Board. I've also served on Plano Housing Authority Advisory Board. I'm in the Leadership North Texas Program. I have a proven track record of fulfilling my campaign promises and putting Plano's taxpayers' interests first. After I was elected, we passed effective tax rate for the first time in 24 years. That means, as an existing homeowner, your taxes stayed flat instead of keep rising in the last two years. I have also voted consistently to limit high-density housing. I'm looking forward to your vote, and I hope to represent all of you as your next mayor. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much, Lily. Next, we have Casey Prince. Please, Casey, go ahead, you have one minute.
Thank you very much, and thank you to Epic for having this forum and allowing me to speak to you today. It's been an honor to serve you on the Plano City Council for the last four years. I find it a real privilege to serve the people of Plano. One of the first emails that I received as a city council member was from a volunteer of the Minis Food Pantry, and she reached out to me because she was concerned that right across the street at the Dart bus station, there was an area where people would wait to get the bus, but there was no shelter over it. And so what would happen is she would see people come to get their food, walk back over to the bus station and wait, but when there was bad weather, they would be sitting there with their groceries in the pouring rain without a shelter. So she asked if there was something that I might be able to do about it. So I quickly worked with our city management and Dart to see if we could get a shelter. And when every day I would drive by this place where this bus stop was, and finally I saw that they got it done, they got a shelter, and I was so excited, I called my husband and I said, "I was really able to make a meaningful difference for the people of Plano." And that's something that stuck with me these past four years, making a meaningful difference for the people and the families of Plano. No matter how small it is or how big it is, that's what drives me to run again for the next four years, is making an impact for you and your families. And if I'm able to have the honor to serve you again, I'm going to focus on keeping you safe, increasing mobility, revitalization, people, increasing the ability for people to feel welcome in our community and good governance. So I hope to have the honor to serve you again. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Casey. Next, we have Anthony Ricardelli. And Anthony, please feel free to correct my pronunciation of your last name. You have one minute to introduce yourself. Please go ahead.
Thank you, Zain, it's Ricardelli, but you were very close. Good afternoon, my name is Anthony Ricardelli, and I'm blessed to currently serve you on the Plano City Council, and in 2019, my colleagues on the council unanimously elected me the Deputy Mayor Pro Tem. I know him a few days early, but I thought I would take the opportunity to say an early Ramadan Mubarak to everyone at Epic. I have a long and deep relationship with the Epic community. I've been to Epic many times in the last four years, starting with my first campaign for city council four years ago, when Akmam Ghazi and Khalid Ashak reached out to me. They're supporting my reelection again this time, so please reach out to Akmam or Khalid if you have any questions about me. I also had the opportunity to speak at Juma in the wake of the Christchurch shooting and to attend an Iftar meal at Epic along with other Plano city leaders. I'm running for reelection now and would love to continue serving you and all of the other people of Plano, so I'd ask for your vote for my reelection. Again, Anthony Ricardelli for reelection to Plano City Council Place Two. Thank you.
All right, Anthony, thank you so much. Next, we have Alisa Klein. Alisa, please go ahead. You have one minute.
Thank you to Epic and to Zain for having us here today. I think it's wonderful that you're making this step to inform the community about the candidates, so thank you for hosting us. My name's Alisa Klein, running for Place Eight. I came here as a teenager. I am not originally from here, I'm an immigrant, just like one in four people that live in the great city of Plano. I'm originally from El Salvador, but my family found themselves relocating here to Plano in the 90s. What brought us here is really just the quality of life and the public education system that we have. I'm a graduate of Plano East, and so are my two sisters. I'm proud to say that I left to go to college and then came back to town to raise my family here. I have two children in the public school system. I have a child in elementary school and one in middle school. I'm a small business owner. My husband and I own our own IT consulting company, so we're proud to be the backbone of the community of the small business world. I'm also a volunteer, I'm a PTA mom, and yes, I'm involved in the PTA as far as the school's concerned, but I also do other things with the PTA, like going down to the legislative sessions and advocating on behalf of education, something that's very important to me. I've also volunteered in many different ways. One of the most recent was I was reached out by the community at Sigler Elementary, who there were some folks that didn't have any water at the Bella Oaks Apartments, and they reached out and they needed help. And so I was able to mobilize with my community that I know, my friends, my network, and I was able to deliver almost 100 cases to them less than a day later. So I'm running for office because I'm a planner and I'm a problem solver. I care a lot about what happens to this community. My parents live in this community, my sister lives in this community, and I'm raising my community here. I want people not just to live in Plano, I want them to work here, I want them to prosper, and I want them to thrive. So I'm delighted to be here. My website is alisaforplano.com, and I'm running for Place Eight, and I hope to have the honor of having your vote. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much, Alisa. Next, we have Nasat Praveen. Nasat, please go ahead, you have one minute to introduce yourself.
Assalamualaikum, thank you so much. I'm sorry for the chaos. I actually was driving home from block walking, and a fellow sister got stranded in the middle of the road, so I'm just doing it from here while she's trying to get her car fixed. But my name is Nasat Praveen, candidate running for Place Four. My family and I, we originally migrated from Bangladesh and came to Plano when I was four years old, so I'm representing the immigrant experience. Coming from this diverse background gave me the ability to speak seven languages and connect with so many different people here in Plano. I went to all of the Plano schools, I love our city and our high standards of living, and I got involved in our community, getting involved in local politics since age 17, and volunteering for candidates, seeing how much it affects us. I've been involved in advocating for mental health and suicide prevention, seeing how much it affects especially our youth and our veterans. And my huge reason that I'm running is I realized that there's a huge voices community in Plano that have been shunned away. 20% of our Plano population is not being represented, and our working class, our elderly, our youth, our ethnic minorities, Islamophobia and other forms of systemic racism has taken over our city. We're in need of affordable housing more than ever, and we need to continue being the city of excellence, and so my years of community service and dedication will help with that. I'm so excited to run my campaign completely people-powered. My years of being an avid tutor and a substitute teacher brought some of my own students involved in this campaign, and earlier they started block walking. And so we are here to bring back inclusivity, diversity back to Plano, making sure that we get through COVID-19 relief and recovery, to make sure we don't lose any more lives. And so if you guys would like more information about me or my candidacy, just go to nasatforplano.com. Thank you.
Sandeep, sir, please go ahead, you have one minute to introduce yourself.
Assalamualaikum. My name is Sandeep. I born in the city of Lucknow in India, and came to this country 25 years back, and I live in Plano since last eight years. And I'm running for Plano City Council Place Seven to make the positive difference to the city, as well as I'm running to represent South Asian community in the city. We have significant population of South Asian, and we need some one of us. I will protect all family values, I'll fight for the lower taxes. Lower taxes, I mean, one side, the taxes, you bring down the taxes, but your house assessment values are going up, so you will see in last three, four years, your property tax bills are, keep on going high, high, and high. So that kind of expertise and budgeting and how to do the proper assessment and keep your taxes low, especially during the COVID, a lot of small businesses have faced so much of problems, so I'm helping all the small businesses, I will help them. And if you go in around the Plano city, you can see every, most of the small businesses have my signs, they put it. So they know I have helped them in previous years also, and I will keep on helping small businesses. I will work to improve our vital infrastructure, roads, conditions, and I'm not a political insider, I will be your voice and will continue to be your voice. I will be very transparent and honest and responsible to each citizen of the Plano. And if you need more information about me, you can go to sandeepforplano.com. Thank you very much.
All right, Sandeep, thank you so much. So candidates, we're going to start off with a general question about housing and the future of Plano. So as many of you know, there's been a debate in the city and across many suburbs across our country about what suburbs should look like in the future. The Plano Tomorrow Comprehensive Plan, where it's focused on a more urbanized Plano with higher-density housing, was recently repealed, and it seems like some people in the city want a more low-density residential feel to the city of Plano. So in your view, what vision should the city have for its future when it comes to housing? Should we focus more on higher-density housing that encourages lower and compelled to move into the city and fights against residential segregation? Or do you think it is important to preserve the suburban feel of the city that some people argue makes Plano, Plano? So Sandeep, we're going to start off with you, you have one minute, and candidates, please try to limit your responses to one minute, we don't have much time and we have many questions. So Sandeep, please start off with your response to this question about housing, low-density versus higher-density housing, and the future of Plano when it comes to housing.
Okay, so my background is I am a real estate broker since last 10 years, and I'm one of the top RE/MAX single-family housing real estate broker, and I have sold so many houses in Plano area. And my take on that density is a problem right now in Plano, because of neighboring cities also, and in Plano, we have very hardly 5% to 7% land has left. So we have to act on a very responsible way of going forward. It's not like we can have everywhere housing. I support affordable housing. Many of my clients are from the affordable housing. I usually find a home for them, and I support equal housing for everyone. So my take is we should have a responsible way of going forward.
All right, Sandeep, thank you. Nasat, please, go ahead, you have one minute to respond to the question.
Thank you. I think that when it comes to developing, we need to develop accordingly and strategically. We need to really look at our population demographics, look at how many traditional families we have here, singles, elderly, and youth, and develop as needed. So we don't want too many big mansions, but we don't want too many apartments either, and at the same time, we need to make sure that it's organized. So areas where we have these suburban neighborhoods that are more single-family units, we want to keep that structure, and in areas like, you know, you see on the expressway where it'd be more feasible to have the apartments, we need to also keep it that way, but at the same time, we need to make sure that we have affordability of all kinds of houses, whether it's single-family, multifamily, duplexes, or townhomes. Because a lot of times when people try to downsize, they may not want to go to an apartment, and we see that a lot with our elderly. So if they want to go down to a cottage or even a townhome, we need to make sure that we have that affordable housing option for them. And even with our youth, people of my age demographic in their 20s, they're looking to settle in Plano, and so if they're starting off with right fresh after college, they need to have that option to live here and also invest here as well.
All right, Nasat, thank you so much. Alisa, please go ahead, and please keep in mind you have one minute to respond to the question.
Yes, thank you, that's an excellent question, and I think one that all of our residents are concerned about. And one thing that I keep hearing over and over again from talking to different residents and block walking and such is that we need to be able to accommodate different stages of life. For example, our recent graduates, we need to have housing that accommodates and that is affordable, that our graduates that are coming back home have somewhere to live. I've also run into different residents, you know, while talking, who say they're retired and they would like to have downsized and, you know, get rid of their $500,000 home and have somewhere to live, so like a townhome style with some green space that promotes community. So I just think we need to listen to our residents, we need to make decisions and plans based on what the people need and be able to provide for the different stages of life. Not, I don't think not everyone, you know, wants to move into one type of neighborhood. We have to be flexible, we have to be smart about our decisions moving forward, and we just have to be strategic about the partnerships we make, when we do have developers come into town. So I believe in planning and just, you know, looking at the different stages of life and what fits our needs.
Thank you, Alisa. Anthony, please go ahead, you have one minute.
Thank you, Zain. As a member of the Plano City Council for the past four years, I have advocated for a Plano with vibrant neighborhoods while continuing to recruit desirable employers and bring job growth to our city. I always take feedback from adjacent homeowners and property owners seriously when considering zoning. I believe that we need to keep Plano a thriving suburban community, and I'm proud that I voted along with my colleagues unanimously to repeal the Plano Tomorrow Plan and move forward with the Comprehensive Plan Review Committee process so that we can have a comprehensive plan for land use that brings all of Plano together. At the same time, we pursued needed revitalization projects like the redevelopment of Collin Creek Mall, which the adjacent neighborhoods overwhelmingly supported. I believe that you know what's best for your neighborhood, so as many others have mentioned, I will listen to you on zoning matters, and I also agree that we need to add additional options for those who want to downsize. The percentage of Plano's population that is seniors is increasing, so senior housing is a good idea, and other types of options, and that can also free up what are sometimes older, potentially lower-priced homes to be affordable for first-time home buyers. So thank you, and again, Anthony Ricardelli for Plano City Council.
All right, thank you, Anthony. Casey, please go ahead, you have one minute.
So cities across North Texas, including Plano, have been studying these issues for years, and in fact, as the Deputy Mayor Pro Tem mentioned, you know, we're studying this through our Comprehensive Plan Review Committee, this appointed body of 16 citizens, and they have spent so much time analyzing various data points and trends to help determine what is the correct ratio for the future of Plano. And they're taking input from citizens, and I'm anxious to see the results of their work. I believe that any decisions that we make regarding the future of housing and I believe that any decisions that we make regarding the future of housing in Plano should reflect the feedback of our citizens. And Plano is almost completely built out. So much of what we're going to be making decisions about in the future will be for reinvestment and reuse. We have many diverse housing needs in our city though. And so they all need to be considered in our planning processes. We've got some families that have become smaller, while other families are getting larger because they're bringing elderly family members to come live with them. Some in our community live a more transient and mobile lifestyle and they're looking for more low maintenance lifestyle. While others, because of the pandemic, have looked for larger space because they're working from home or they have several people working from home. And so I think it's important that all these factors are considered when we're planning for housing needs. But we need to look for what the best fit is for all of our citizens in the best places in our city. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much, Casey. Next, Lily Bow, please. You have one minute to respond to the question. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Regarding development type for the future of Plano, I think it's important we definitely listen to the citizens' voices. In the past, we have done a lot of surveys and a survey after survey that people have indicated, you know, business, house, office, single family home residential is more preferred type of development. For the past decade between 2010 and 2019, Plano has built 12,400 units of housing where sixty eight percent of them were multifamily. So for me, the key question is balance. Number one, listen to the citizens' input. Number two is balance. How much should we develop with less than five percent of land left? So for example, we have consistently supported Collin Creek Mall project on council. I have also personally supported a lot of the senior housing, the, you know, for seniors to stay in Plano. Right now, about close to forty percent of housing in Plano is already multifamily. You know, that's considered everything that has been approved. So the question, you know, right now is raised at the Comprehensive Plan Review Committee, where, you know, the prior council members have said, you know, are discussing and they're trying to come up. And I encourage all of you, if you have concerns regarding this, talk to those people, talk to us, talk to people on the Comprehensive Plan Committee and make your voices heard. Thank you.
All right, Lily, thank you so much for your response. Justin, please go ahead. You have one minute to respond to the question.
Thank you. You know, this isn't, isn't, isn't an easy answer when you're talking about high density versus low density. Ultimately, like many people have mentioned before, we have to look at what is needed and what existing homeowners who live nearby want. There are several ways that high density affects existing neighborhoods, like lower property values, increased school class sizes and increased traffic. I agree with several, several of the other people who mentioned senior housing should be prioritized. I have neighbors on both sides of me who bought their house thirty years ago when the house was built and they had a big family at home. But now they can't downsize because there isn't anywhere else to go. We don't want to lose our long-term residents because they're a vital part of our community. We don't want them to have to move an hour or two away because there's no housing supply here. So we should prioritize senior housing so that it'll open up new homes where new families can move into our neighborhoods or kids can go to our schools. They'll renovate and remodel those homes, further injecting additional money into our economy.
All right, Justin, thank you so much for your response. David Smith, please go ahead. You have one minute to respond to the question.
Well, for my entire thirty one years here, I've been a neighborhood advocate. So preservation of existing neighborhoods is priority number one. And that includes what may be developed adjacent to it. Now, this small amount of land that's available for development or redevelopment, we need to be smart about putting the right kind of housing in the right places. And it doesn't have to be either large mansions, you know, or, or dense.
David, are you still with us? I think he may be having. And John Muns, in the meantime, would you like to respond to the question until David can rejoin us?
Sure, I'd be glad to. So I, I'm not for high density. I'm not against apartments where they're appropriate. But I am in favor of doing what's best for the people of Plano. And I will always prioritize people over the developers. Fair housing has got to be considered on every development proposal. And we need to be thoughtful, intentional in making decisions on what little, little land we have left. We need to always have a good balance of business and residents to, to keep our taxes low. So that's my intent and, and that's, that's, I think, the best thing we can do going forward with, with the small amount of land that we have left.
All right. Thank you, John. Next, Vidal, you have one minute to respond. Please go ahead.
Absolutely. Thank you. From my point of view, the future should be less density. We need smaller lots for people who want to downsize and want to move into a smaller home, but aren't wanting to move into apartments. And currently, Plano doesn't offer the separate housing option. Sadly, the little land left in Plano is already owned by developer or somebody who wants to develop that land and turn over the most profitable profit and lining their own pockets, which has a business plan and a business individual that turns over the highest, largest investment for them. From a public health standpoint, this isn't realistic and a sustainable approach. We already know what we need to do. We already have the answers. We just need to start electing individuals who can execute them. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much, Vidal. Next, we have Julie. Please go ahead, Julie.
Sorry, I was looking at the order differently. The demographics in Plano are shifting right now, that some of our older citizens are wanting to downsize. And unfortunately, there are not a lot of options for them to do that outside of apartments, as some other people have mentioned. They, the problem is that since they don't have anywhere to go, they're not freeing up their single family homes for young families to move into, to populate our schools. So we're actually seeing a decrease in our attendance, which is, is reducing the funding that's coming into our schools, which is an issue. So I, I do think we need a more affordable housing. My former business partner is fixed social security. She couldn't find any more affordable in Plano to live, had to move to Dallas. I also think that to keep our taxes low, we need to be recruiting and attracting businesses to Plano. And those businesses need somewhere for their employees to live. And preferably we put those places close to where they work so that we don't increase traffic. So I think, I think we need to thoughtfully consider what, what's best for Plano with the input from our constituents. And also look at what the final comprehensive plan is and take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Julie. Casey, did I give you a chance to respond to the question? I'm sorry. Did I skip over you?
No, I got to answer. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Lydia, please go ahead. You have one minute to respond to the question.
You're skipping over Steve.
Oh, no, no, I have a different order on, on here. Yeah.
Okay.
I went in reverse order compared to the introductions. Sorry about that. Yeah.
All right, I'll go with that. So it's folly, folks, to try and be something for everyone. We have a great skeleton here of a wonderful community of people who have a servant's heart, who find the time to be in their home, but then to be outside and, you know, work at the, at the kitchens and to help people. That's a model that I want other areas to copy. I want them to be so envious of what we have here and in Plano that they go out and replicate it. They say this is a winning proposition because you know what, folks? Density is dying. There, the COVID was just one of the catalysts, just one that is pushing people out of cities, looking for homes with space. So at the same time that you have the seniors who want smaller homes, there are people who want homes with space for their childrens. So again, folks, we have to be the best that we can be at one thing and recognize that we're not going to be something for everyone. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Lydia. And Stephen, please go ahead. You have one minute to respond to the question.
Okay, a lot of things have been said. I think townhomes, duplexes and other non-apartment, but smaller housing options are a good solution for Plano. They work well in both large and small multi-use developments as well as for infill. While we only have about four or five percent of our land left, we have a lot of small areas, which for one reason or another were not developed between neighborhoods. And Plano needs to allow for these smaller home types like townhomes to be constructed in those areas where they're not in conflict with the single family home neighborhoods. Based on the employer needs and the aging of our population, general demographic trends, et cetera, it's really clear and others have said we need more of this smaller housing. But we do need to be careful not to stress out any particular area. We don't want to stress any particular schools. We don't want to stress out any of our other infrastructure. But placing housing near employment in multi-use developments, as we've done in Legacy West, as we're doing in Collin Creek Mall, this decreases traffic. It decreases that traffic running through Plano. It provides a boost for our neighborhood service providers like retailers and restaurants. And we do have the, the land to do that and add this housing without necessarily building or overbuilding apartments. Thank you.
Thank you. David, can you hear us now?
Yes, I can.
All right.
Apologies, the internet connection to my computer apparently flaked out.
No problem. Do you want to respond to the question? I'll give you another chance. You have one minute if you'd like to go ahead.
Okay. The last point I was going to make before I got cut off was that we do have very good data on the demand for the different types of housing. I recently served on the City Housing Plan Advisory Committee. Yeah, back on the computer now.
David, you might want to log off from your phone and then just do it from the laptop. That might make it easier.
Yes. Hang on.
No problem. Okay, there we go.
Okay, back with you with one place. Yeah, I was saying from the Housing Plan Advisory Committee, we, we have very good information. We also have a lot of very good ideas for various initiatives the city can take regarding affordable housing, different types of housing, so forth. And I very much look forward to using that information along with what is coming forward from our comprehensive plan process to, to get going on, on the right types of housing in the right places for the city of Plano.
All right, David, thank you so much. And for some, for some candidates now, I have a follow-up question. Many studies have shown that expanding Section Eight housing, building affordable housing for our lower income families is one of the best tools to help children move up the economic ladder by giving them access to better schooling. As we all know, Plano ISD has great schools compared to many other cities. Knowing that, do you think an emphasis on lower density housing discourages lower income families from moving to Plano? And does it exacerbate residential segregation, which is already a huge problem in Dallas suburbs? So John, I want to give you a minute to respond to that.
Well, I'm, I'm not so sure that the, the type of housing is, is relevant and is critical as it is affordable. So I think that's the main objective that, that people are looking for. Obviously, people all, people have the option of deciding what their, what their needs are. And, and that's their prerogative. But I, I really think it's the affordability that, that makes it a possible option for them. And right now, it's very limited in Plano. And there are areas in Plano that would be suitable for that, and there are some areas that it would not be. So I think that's more the issue is where would these be and would this be an appropriate place for them?
Okay. Anthony, I'd also like if you could respond to that question. I'll give you a minute as well.
Thank you, Zane. Well, I appreciate the question and the opportunity to have a thoughtful dialogue. I would push back slightly on the premise of the question in the sense that many of the apartments that are proposed and built in the city of Plano are not affordable to lower income families. Many of them are at a, at a much higher price point. And so when we have discussions about density, I think that if we conflate apartments automatically with affordability, that's a false equivalence. Because many, many times the apartments that are being built are at a, at a higher price point. That being said, I, I do think that housing affordability is key. As I was mentioning, or we're getting toward, many single family homes in our community rent for less than what new apartments rent for. So I think that on the life cycle of housing, when you look at people who want to downsize, new houses cost more than, than older houses, generally speaking, in my experience. So maintaining that life cycle of housing, when you give seniors who want to downsize more options to downsize, you, you free up what are sometimes houses at a lower price point for first time home buyers to, to allow people to get into the community at a more affordable level. And so I think that that helps with the concerns that you raised because we certainly want to make sure that Plano is a beacon of opportunity for everyone. So thank you for the opportunity to address that point, Zane.
Thank you so much, Anthony. Next question, this again is a general question to all candidates. Many of you have expressed on your website, support for Plano's law enforcement, first responders. In light of the, of the arrest of eighteen year old Rodney Reese and an African American teenager who is walking home from work, do you think this signals a larger problem with the policing culture here in Plano? And what steps, and what steps could be taken to address that problem if it is a problem? And Stephen, I'd like if you could respond. You have one minute. And please, everyone, try to keep under one minute so we can get to all these questions.
Thank you. You know, if you'd asked me a couple of months ago, what one of our biggest problems in Plano was, faith and confidence in our police department would not have been one of those things. But my thoughts have changed because the thoughts of many people in Plano have been changing and evolving. The faith and confidence in our police is of utmost importance. We are a city that expects, where its citizens expect to be not just safe, but in the safest city in America. So what happened has been researched and explained by our police chief. And it's an unfortunate situation with the boy who walked home from, in the storm. There are other issues that we've seen in and around Plano where police have not done what I think any of us on this call believed would have been right. So we do need to work on it. We do need to be sure that we have faith and that our police are properly trained to deal with diversity. Thank you.
All right, Stephen, thank you so much. Lydia, if you want, please go ahead and address the question and try to keep it under one minute.
I'll keep it short. You know, there's many different ways to see the same situation. And I know that if the police had gone out there and seen this young man walking in the storm in the cold with inappropriate clothing and saw that he was of African American descent and decided, well, no, we're not going to follow up. We're not going to check on his welfare because of a racial bias. That would have made all the news. That would have seemed to me to be a real problem. But to follow a protocol that says, independent of your race, this is how we treat you. If you're walking in the cold, if you don't look like you know where you're going, if you can't answer questions, this is the route we follow. You've got to have a, a rule that people can follow and the police were following protocol. And I think they did it out of the welfare concern for this young man. Thank you.
Lydia, to follow up from that, a lot of the concern that community members here at Epic and Plano have had was that the fact that the teenager was arrested by the police and the charges were later dropped. So do you think that has an effect on the actions of these police officers that they did end up arresting Rodney Reese?
Well, then I would be looking at the protocols and see if that step was the next, the necessary step to get him the care or the attention that he needed. So sometimes there is legal obligations even imposed upon the police officers. And if those are, you know, they got dismissed, but if they are something that is done just to appease the public or appease the legislators, I would say that that should be looked at because the legislators, I would say that that should be looked at because it has to be necessary for the welfare of the individual, not for the police protocol.
All right. Thank you so much, Lydia. Next, Julie Homer, please go ahead. You have one minute to respond to the question.
Yes, I'm impressed that the city's already taken some action to make sure things like that don't happen again. They've passed a new procedure that they are not to arrest anyone for a class, Casey may have to correct me on this, a class, is it a Class B or a Class C misdemeanor, that, without having approval from a supervisor. So I actually learned from, I'm sorry, Casey, I'm stealing an answer from a previous forum, but that black males are, even though it's, it's shown that blacks and whites or whatever diversity there is, there's equal marijuana use amongst these populations. However, African-Americans are arrested at a much higher rate when they have under a certain amount, which is a misdemeanor. So they've actually passed a rule now in Plano that police are not allowed to arrest unless it's for public intops. And so I think that was a great step in the right direction because I agree that he should not have been arrested. That wasn't handled well. And also we have an issue with our evening officers being the rookie officers and not as seasoned. And so that may have led to that as well. Thank you.
All right, Julie, thank you so much. Vidal, please go ahead and please try to keep your response under one minute.
Sure, absolutely. I do think that there was a lot of mishaps that happened during that scenario. I'm sure all of us saw the videos and the footage and noticed that they took an aggressive approach towards that. Also, the fact that our current police force is 592 full-time for a city our size. I think we need additional 25 to 30 more police officers. And we need to disperse the years of experience for all shifts. It is a 24/7 operation for that department and it should be divided equally. Also, a lot of core competency, some checklist and some educational processes should be taken into account when it comes to this. And one thing that I was disappointed about is that our police chief did not make an announcement or any updates at a city council meeting. I was glad our mayor did, but it would have shown a lot of leadership from our department if our chief was there representing that comment.
All right, Vidal, thank you so much. John, please go ahead. You have one minute to respond.
Did you call on me?
Yes.
Oh, thank you. Well, a lot that has been said, I agree with. I continue to want to make sure that we're providing the resources for our police officers to make sure that we have the training and the education to deal with unique issues, especially the one that occurred during the freeze. And so I support training and education and obviously making sure that our police force is evenly spread out so that we're not dealing with police officers working extra hours because the short staff. So a lot, a lot has been said that I agree with, but mainly the training and education is important.
All right. Thank you, John. Next, Casey, please go ahead. You have one minute to respond.
Thank you. You know, I'll say, as a mom of two African-American boys, that was very hard for me to see and something that I took very personally. But I will say that after that happened, I had the opportunity to speak personally with the, with the chief about that situation. And I greatly appreciated his candor and the way that he immediately started working to bring about change in our police department in direct response to that. And I've seen that throughout his short tenure with us, that he's not afraid to look at difficult situations and say, we can get better and we will get better. And just as Julie already mentioned, there's already been changes that have put in place. And so I'm confident in his leadership and I'm confident in the police officers that I've spoken to, that they do care deeply about the people of our city and that they want to do the very best. And I'm confident that we'll see that going forward in the way that they do community policing. And that if we give them the very best resources, and as we did last Monday night, where we increased the amount of police officers they can hire, that it will really help them to be at their very best in the, in the difficult times so they can make great decisions.
All right. Thank you, Casey. Next, Justin, please go ahead. You have one minute.
Yeah, thank you. So I think this was a bad scenario that was exacerbated by weather circumstances. I don't personally think the police had any ill will in their hearts or any, any racism. It just was a horrible scenario that didn't work out for anyone. They were sent out there to investigate a call. And, you know, what happened, happened. I mean, several people have mentioned that we need to focus on training and protocol, which I completely agree with. I've actually proposed a live-in Plano bonus for police officers who live in Plano, who live in our neighborhoods where they can take home their cruiser and live within those communities that they serve. Perhaps if this young man had known a police officer or interacted with him, maybe one lived down the street, he wouldn't have been so hesitant, you know, to answer the police questions. Or, or if their police are continually seen, you know, out in their yard or waving to people, maybe it, it changes the perspective of police from what people normally see on TV. You know, if you just watch TV and hear these terrible stories, you're going to, you know, have a preconceived disposition to police officers. So there's obviously things we can do. And I plan on working together with the community to find those solutions.
All right. Thank you, Justin. Next, Lily, please go ahead. You have one minute to respond to the question.
Yeah, thank you. As a council member, it was very surprised for me to learn about that, you know, incident. I was actually the first person brought this to the city manager and to the attention of the police department. I want to echo what other council members have expressed, you know, before, I have confidence in our police department to do the right thing. You know, everybody is not perfect. And the good thing that we need to look for is if there's something we need to change, we need to do it. And we are very fortunate in Plano to have a police chief, you know, Chief Drain, who is very competent, who has the right heart and has the right leadership to lead and to just do the right thing. So I wanted to just let you, all of your audience know that they have made changes. They are, you know, always reevaluating. They have earned national awards, you know, in the past. So they will do the right thing. And I think people, you know, the African-American community definitely, you know, you know, trying to also help the city to do the right thing. And I'm just glad to see that things are working out. And we stand before all our communities on city council.
All right. Thank you, Lily. Anthony, please go ahead. You have one minute to respond.
Thank you, Zane. I really appreciate how transparent our police chief, Ed Drain, was. He, he right away said that, that this arrest was not consistent with, you know, with, with the reason for the call, the welfare check. And that's why the charges were dropped. I was on the same call that Mayor Pro Tem Casey Prince mentioned, along with the mayor, city manager Israelson, and our police chief, Ed Drain. And we had a chance to ask questions and receive answers. One thing that I think people need to understand is that Chief Drain mentioned when he was the chief in Amarillo, that there was an individual who was left alone by, by a police officer and then died later that night from hypothermia. So if we had left, that could also have caused an undesirable outcome. In any event, our excellent police department has a commitment to equitable policing. And that commitment shows in the new policy that others have referenced. Our police department even has implicit bias training, crisis intervention training. And I can tell you, I'm committed to holding our excellent police department accountable, and they want to be held accountable. In the wake of the killing of George Floyd, Bill Knight, the president of the Plano Police Association, talked about how he would have stopped that incident if he had been there in Minneapolis and seen how that went. So I just want to say, I'm committed and our police department is committed to equitable policing. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Anthony. Next, Sandeep, please go ahead. You have one minute to respond to the question.
Yeah. So being from a minority community, and we have seen what police done this in our country. And we came here just because this is a rule of law country. But it's still with us, whenever police stops any, any of us or minority, it thinks are different. We, I mean, everybody will agree, we get scared. And that is the truth. And because the problem is, police is not educated for diversity and what other cultures and other communities think. So the Plano city needs to invest in police training so that we, minority community feel much more safe in their hands. Plus, police should keep on visiting our churches, mosques, temples, or our places so that they know how we behave, or what are our concerns and all those things. And we get more friendly. So that is why my thing is when I will be in city councils, I will try to be bridging this gap between police and other minorities community. I will work on that, help police to understand and train them, and as well as bring our community also to become friendly with the police and see how stressed they are. I have full respect for the police, fire, first responders. They are doing a great job. We need to fund and train them little bit in this side also. So that is why, from our community, I want to be, represent our committee in the city council so that these kind of things which other council members will not understand, I can better educate them. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you so much for answering, for sharing your experience. Lisa, please go ahead. You have one minute to respond.
Thank you. This is an excellent question. I agree with a lot of what the other candidates have said. I looked at this in many different ways. I looked at it as a mother. As a mother, you could see that the teenager was very frightened and there was no doubt that, you know, that he was scared. I think that the, furthermore, the conversations we've had, Chief Drain has come out, you know, and said that they should have taken him home. So that makes us look at future trainings, ongoing trainings. And, and I think that's good. Having the conversations, having the tough conversations, engaging groups like the teenager's family, the NAACP, these are the correct steps. We're not a perfect city, but what makes us excellent is that we're willing to look at our mistakes and move forward and learn from them. So I think that the steps that we've taken towards the future are great. I think that having Chief Drain as our leader for the Plano PD is a good step in the right direction. And I think that steps that we're taking again, to look at, look at the situations like this and learn from them and make plans moving forward is the right thing to do.
All right. Thank you so much. Next, Nasat, please go ahead and try to keep your response under one minute, please.
It was really heartbreaking and disheartening to see that situation. Even I, as a young minority woman, when I'm caught jaywalking in front of police, I've never dealt with that. But I do have friends from the African-American community, and they tell me how frightening it is when they're in front of cops. And so that is why, like, it's important our police officers, they continue getting educated and expanding that implicit bias training, conflict resolution, diversity, and mental health. Because at the end of the day, you know, like, one of the candidates here said, you would never know unless you are from that minority community of what it feels like, especially with it being such a tough time. You know, we see the Steve Martins going on and then George Floyds, you know, it's just a really scary time. So it's important that we become transparent. It's also important that we continue on with the community policing. We have more mentoring programs in school. I'm lucky that I went to Plano Senior High School and a sweet officer was a great mentor of mine. And it's why I myself don't have that fear. But we don't see that happening as much anymore. And then on top of that, like, it's very important that the way we, the police, as they have their dialogue, it's done in such a way, it doesn't frighten young teenagers or anyone from a minority community. Me and my friends, the other day, we accidentally dialed 911, but then the police ended up banging super hard on the doors. And, you know, we were very scared. So it's important our police, they get educated on these situations, how we approach individuals and stuff. Like, we should do it in a way that makes them feel safe. So I don't agree with the arrest at all. They should have taken him home. They should have let him go. And they should have seen that he was okay. And just done their job of making sure citizens feel safe, both physically and mentally as well. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Nasat. And David, please go ahead. You have one minute to respond to the question.
Well, let me go back to what I had to say in the first minute. I don't think our, our main challenge is reforming the police department as we learn of incidents. It's working on our entire community. If we have a community where everybody is respected and welcomed and can feel safe, then our police department will follow suit, you know, given we're hiring the right kind of people and they have the right kind of resources. I support a lot of the good things about training and so forth that have already been said. I will add to that. We need to look at adding some more specialist positions to our, our police and fire departments. You know, we currently have people who specialize in SWAT situations, hazardous materials, so forth. We need more people who are specialists in welfare calls and dealing with the mentally ill and the homeless. We want good training for, for everybody, but, you know, we have more of the very well-educated specialists and well-experienced specialists in our departments will, may have much better outcomes.
Well, David, I do have a follow-up question for you specifically. On your website, you discuss systemic racism in Plano. Can you elaborate on why systemic racism is an issue that affects the city of Plano? And please try to keep your response under one minute.
Okay. Well, the systemic racism here in Plano is part of the systemic racism in virtually all, all of America, you know, particularly, you know, here in the South. And it goes back decades. And, you know, many of us have, have been part of this, sometimes not even realizing it. And we need to understand the roots of that. We need to understand the current practices and customs that keep that going and then work towards dismantling it. Again, there are a lot of good initiatives, a lot of, my church initiative started before the George Floyd incident. But since then, there's been a lot of good initiative that we can seize on if we choose to take a leadership position on this. It's complex. There's no silver bullet that can resolve it. There's no set of silver bullets that will resolve it. But we need to start talking about that. We need to start having the difficult conversations and move forward.
All right, David, thank you so much. Lydia, I do have a specific question for you. On your website, on your website, you mentioned meeting with strong supporters of the Second Amendment and position yourself as a strong supporter of the Second Amendment. In light of multiple mass shootings in the past weeks have once again taken the lives of innocent Americans, what do you think can be done to prevent this from happening, especially when many Muslims here in this country live in fear of being shot to death in their place of worship? And this, and specifically, especially since mass shootings aren't an issue that affect Muslims in other Western countries, because they don't happen as often there. So can you expand on what you think can be done to prevent this from happening?
You know, that you cannot prevent mass shootings by taking away the firearms from law-abiding civilians. Because it'll be a mass shooting, a mass car wreck, a mass knifing. There's, there's many ways to cause destruction and civic unrest, to make points. Some of them are by people who are mentally ill. But I do know that if you have firearms, if you have a strong Second Amendment adherence, then people who are licensed to carry can stop those before they become, you know, insurmountable. They are, many instances, and actually, guns used in self-defense are really undercounted, how many lives are safe and how many times somebody has stopped an incident because they have a firearm. So you've got to weigh the both sides and realize that there's no easy solution to this.
Well, Lydia, thank you for that. This is from a viewer, but someone has pointed out that you mentioned that someone with a license to carry could stop a shooter. They mentioned that in Dayton, when there was that shooting, there was a police officer there on scene, but, and he was able to take down the shooter within 20 seconds, I believe. But the shooter was still able to kill nine people. So do you think, knowing that in context, at Sutherland Springs, which is a house of worship much like East Plano Islamic Center, where a person with a gun was able to stop the shooter only after, I think, 27 people were killed, do you think that notion still holds true, that a person with the gun could stop a mass shooter?
If that person with the gun didn't fire, then would more than 20 people have been killed?
No, but the idea is that could have, could have this been prevented from No, but the idea is that could have this been prevented from happening in the first place where one person with a gun could kill so many people in a short amount of time?
No, no, I don't think it could. Because we saw it happen at the school. I forgot the name of the school, but the, I think it's Sandy Hook's shooting, where you had a police officer on duty to protect the students and he wasn't able to stop it.
Okay, okay. Well, thank you for your response. And also, Ken, I'd just like to mention, if anyone would like to weigh up on any of these more specific questions, just let me know in the chat and I can ask you. And then regarding public health, as we all know, that's an important issue in light of the COVID-19 pandemic. Over 550,000 Americans have died from the virus. Our mosque has lost many community members. Many members of our committee are physicians who have dealt with this virus and have lost many countless patients to this virus. As we know, the city council, I believe in June, early July, voted down an ordinance to mandate masks in the city of Plano. Governor Greg Abbott did impose a statewide mask mandate after. But knowing that, Lilly and Anthony, correct me if I'm wrong, you two voted against the mask mandate. Knowing that so many Americans have died from this virus, was that the correct decision in hindsight? And Anthony, I'll let you respond first, sorry.
Sure. You know, I, I don't, I don't think we should get into hindsight. I'll talk about the reason that we, we made that decision at the time. The ordinance that we considered was not, I think the first thing that's important to understand, it was not an individual mask ordinance. It was an ordinance that would have essentially deputized businesses that were already struggling with a law enforcement duty to, to enforce masks on their customers. I also think that voluntary compliance has been so successful. At the time, we did adopt an ordinance that strongly recommended wearing face masks. And, you know, that was, that was my preferred approach because the voluntary compliance has essentially been at the center of our city's response. I checked with Deputy City Manager Russian, who is over Police and Fire in November, about four months after Governor Abbott's mandate went into effect. And the city of Plano considered that enforceable and gave direction to enforce that. Zero citations had been issued during that timeframe because that, that, that ability, that authority to issue citations just wasn't necessary. As I said, out of the time, at the time, I appealed to you out of compassion rather than compulsion, you know, to wear a mask at that point in the pandemic and where we were in the trajectory of the virus. And I think that that approach was effective. And so, so again, I think without a single citation being issued under Governor Abbott's order, that means if we had voted yes to adopt that, not a single citation would have been issued, at least through last November, on that. And, and I think that shows that when we, when we made that strong recommendation, the people of Plano took that seriously. So thank you.
Thank you so much, Anthony. Lilly, would you also like to respond to the question? You have one minute.
Sure, yes, definitely. You know, Plano has been really successful combating this pandemic. All data have showed Plano done really well compared with our neighboring cities or neighboring counties. I really have to commend you that you got the facts quite right. Most people get confused about, you know, that meeting. So on June 30th, Tuesday, we had an emergency meeting talking about the so-called mask mandates. But it's an ordinance that actually at the time, the governor's executive order was in place for all, all state explicitly prohibit any penalty upon any person, individual, who did not wear masks. So upon that condition, the executive order, the language, the draft of the ordinance that we were discussing in the meeting explicitly prohibited any fine, any penalty toward the person who did not want to wear a mask. Instead, the ordinance, what we were discussing was to apply a $500 fine towards small businesses if there is somebody in their premises who did not wear masks. So basically, I think other council members and I, you know, we just could not vote for it because we didn't believe we can punish, you know, penalize small businesses when they are already suffering a lot. And you are right, that two days later, on Thursday, July the 2nd, less than 48 hours from our meeting, that the governor issued a new executive order and that just applied to the whole state saying, you know, any individual who did not want to wear a mask will face a $250 fine. So what Plano has done really well is that we keep, we kept things simple and straightforward and not to create confusion. Had Plano voted for it, Plano has, is in two counties, right? There would be a different state mandate, two county mandates. And if Plano has another different one, it would create a lot of confusion. So we actually did the right thing. Thank you.
All right, thank you for clarifying, Lilly. Now, this is another question.
Zain, I'd like to weigh in on that.
Oh, okay, yeah, go ahead, Stephen.
This is Steve Levine. And they can, Anthony and Lilly can justify their position a variety of different ways, but over 800 folks made comments and suggestions to the board or to the city council before that meeting, pleading and asking for the city council to enact some kind of a mandate so that citizens would know that they would be protected as they go into various retail and service locations. And the businesses would have a purpose, a way to be able to tell citizens that the city had required it. It's one thing to say that they would have been policing it, but it's another thing to be able to say that the city required it and therefore they would have gotten a reasonable amount of cooperation, as did occur once the governor gave his mandate. So I would have voted for some form of mandate from the city.
Okay.
I agree with Steve. I would have as well. I think that we had an opportunity to actually look like we were ahead of the game and make our announcement before Abbott did. As a former restaurant owner, I, my heart goes out to how, how difficult it's been for restaurants during this pandemic as it, as it is. What I equated it to was when I had a restaurant and vaping was popular and there was no ordinance initially on whether you could vape in public places. So I had customers who were vaping in my restaurant and I had customers who were complaining about people vaping. And I desperately wanted an ordinance and I was thrilled when it was passed that gave me something to, you know, keep me from alienating which customer I'm going to tell they can or can't do that with. So I think the ordinance, I mean, it could have been changed to take the penalty off of the business owner. I mean, there were changes that were made. So I, I felt very strongly that that was bad for small businesses, that hurt small businesses. Even since Abbott's lifted the mandate, I'm seeing people commenting on social media that they're going back to curbside pickup because they don't want to go in stores unless they know that they're going to require masks inside. So that was something I felt strongly about as well. I wish we would have passed that. I think it would have made Plano look a lot stronger.
Zain, I'm sorry, I want to make one more clarification. I misspoke a moment ago. It wasn't 800, 1,243 members of the, the citizens asked in favor of a mask mandate and only 241 were opposed prior to that meeting.
Yeah, let me jump in. We have not done a good job with the pandemic. We had hundreds of Plano residents who have died. We need, going forward, we need a full court press to eradicate the pandemic in our area, to establish Plano as a safe place to dine, shop and do business. We need to be united in that and not taking politically correct positions on things. We need to be moving ahead to protect the safety and welfare of our citizens.
One final thing I'd like to just quickly just jump in is I think that we have to look at decisions like this that were made and the downstream effect. And this affected how, when the state decided to allocate vaccines, we struggled. And I believe that this decision is to not make it a priority to have the mask mandate affected how the vaccines were distributed. And, you know, we were all scrambling at the beginning. And yes, you know, they took actions later on, but that decision in and of itself had a downstream effect.
And I'd like to also, this is without, this also takes into effect that we need to add more responses and more education to your emergency response teams, emergency preparedness, a whole council, maybe a commission created for us that concentrates on this types of things, where we have plans, scenarios and processes. I think learning from all of this, that we need to educate ourselves on what could happen, what should we do and what can we do. That's just my comment. Thank you.
And I'd like to jump in on the issue of vaccines that was brought up since another, a number of others have jumped in. Early on in the vaccination process, both Collin County and Denton County, the counties in which Plano is situated, were short-changed significantly on vaccine allocation in proportion to our percentage of the state population. I went into action and asked for a special meeting, which my colleagues supported. And we all unanimously passed a resolution calling on the State Department of, or the Department of State Health Services to remedy the vaccine allocation issue. So we are out there advocating for you and I will continue to do that.
And I just want to add something as well. To Julie's point, I actually supported a mask mandate as well, but the, but I want to thank Lilly and Anthony for voting against this one because it was the wrong mask mandate. As a small business owner, it put the onus on us to police that. And you can watch the news and see every day where, you know, a business owner asks somebody to wear a mask and they get punched or there's some sort of violence. I think people have always had the ability to vote with their wallet. And if, if a business is not operating in a way that you see safe or you agree with, then don't, don't shop there. And that business will ultimately pay the price and hopefully change their ways. So while, while they did vote against this mask mandate, I agree with their decision in that it was the actual wrong one for Plano. So thank you.
But could it not have just been amended so to put it the other way? I'd like to add a little more. First of all, I personally was the first council member who started wearing a mask. Nobody, most people, when they read something, they thought mask mandate was something, you know, they understood. The language, I already mentioned, the language in the mask ordinance that we were discussing deliberating explicitly prohibit any penalty to the person who did not wear masks. In addition, there are language in that draft that we were discussing says anybody can claim for health reasons, no proof needed, that they don't need to wear it. Okay, so let's not talk about this when, you know, the details are not discussed. Yeah, let's move on.
Well, thank you so much, everyone, for weighing in. I know mask mandates have been a contentious issue and the pandemic has killed a countless number of Americans. We have the highest of toll in the world by far. And I do appreciate everyone voicing their concerns and, and clarifying their positions on this. It is an issue that many people in our community feel strongly about as well. This is another question from Live Q and A. Someone asks, how will you combat systemic racism that affects Islamic communities and African-American communities? I feel like many candidates are too scared to do the right thing. So with that, do you think systemic racism is an issue that affects Muslim populations and African-American populations in Plano? And if so, what could you, what can you do to combat that systemic racism? So Stephen, I'll give you the first shot of this question.
I'm sorry, Zain, would you mind if I go first because I have to leave?
Oh, yes.
And I'd love to answer this question.
Yeah, yeah, so whoever needs to leave at four.
Yeah, I'm in the same boat, Zain. With, we have other events that we got to, you know, check in on, so.
But yeah, this is a really important question. So I'll be quick and I'll go and then let, if John wants to go. So when, when the unfortunate, the hurtful things that were said by one of my fellow colleagues back when I first got on council, it was me and one other colleague that felt it was very important that we address this publicly. And we were the ones who called for the council meeting where we addressed this publicly. And if you want to go back and watch that council meeting, you can. And you will see the things that I said in support of our Muslim community. And so I stood up for the Muslim community during that time and I would do that again today if that happened. I think that it's important that we all speak in a way that we support every person in our community, regardless of their race, ethnicity, creed. And so I am proud of the way that I have been able to collaborate with citizens, regardless of their race, regardless of their background. And I have a very diverse group of supporters that are supporting me because I think that I've shown that I care about every person in our community deeply, regardless of their background. So thank you very much and thank you for the privilege of being here with you today.
Well, thank you. That was the last question we had, so thank you for weighing in, Casey. John, I know you wanted to go. If anyone else needs to go, please let me know in the chat and I'll just call on you next.
I'll be brief because I know everybody is, is busy. But obviously, I've, I've commented on this a lot. We do have some cultural commissions that, that do some of these things, but I would recommend us have a diversity, diversity commission that really brings our cultures to the table so that we as council members can understand the issues that they're facing and how we can come up with solutions. So it's really important to me that we have a, a process for all of our cultures in Plano to have a voice and to be able to have an opportunity for us as council people, if we are, to be able to hear those things and be able to address them and really have some teeth in them so that we can, we can address them and try to come up with some solutions.
All right, John. Well, thank you so much for joining us, John. It was a privilege to host you here and thank you again for your responses. Lydia, I know you mentioned you have to go too. If you'd like to weigh in on this question, you can go ahead.
And it's perfect because I'm going to follow off of John's comment. I think if you ask the question, how do you combat this? How do you fix it? Then you really have to do the work to identify what a non-systemic racist community looks like. And we haven't talked about that. What does it mean in terms of number of events of racism? What does it mean in terms of percent of the population that has certain levels of income or certain levels of education? I think that until we can get to that point, we're just talking about what do we need to do to feel good? And that's not tackling the question you asked. Thank you, sir. Thank you, everyone, for having us here. I really appreciate it. God bless.
All right, thank you, Lydia. Take care. Stephen, would you like to?
All right, thank you. There are three things that I believe need to be done to help combat what is essentially systemic racism in, in our society. I believe that racial, ethnic and gender injustice reveals itself in all aspects of society. And I agree with the idea that we need to establish a commission to promote social learning, collective introspection and policy action. That's a very important part of what they, we need to allow this commission to do. They need to be able to establish policies. Second, we have a population where a quarter of our adults are foreign-born. And because of that, and we have a number of adults, taxpayers in our community, many of whom are members of the Islamic faith and members of the mosques in our community who are not voters. We do not hear them through the voting process. And so I feel we need to go beyond voting process. We need to find a way to listen to those people through polling and other forms of communication to be able to hear them. And finally, because discrimination begins early and it grows quickly if unchecked, we need to work with our school systems to establish a curriculum that clearly in our earliest grades deals with cultural understanding and sensitivity training for our youth. Thank you.
Well, Stephen, thank you so much for weighing in. Sandeep, you mentioned you have to go. If you'd like to answer next, you can give a quick response.
Yeah, thank you. I've been, it's very easy to say about and talk about and give a lecture on racism unless you feel, unless you have felt in your life, then you know what exactly. So that is why my request is to rest of the councilmen, give us a chance in council also, in other elected positions also. We can easily handle this kind of things. And I would request like, give us a chance, give us the other community people also to come and join the Plano Council or state or other elections also. And that is the best way to cut it down. Then people will see, yes, you support Islamic people, other people in, and sitting next to you in council. So that's why we are running and to get this thing down in city of Plano as well as in state of Texas, as well as in US. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much again for joining us, Sandeep. It was a privilege to host you and thank you for giving your response.
Thank you and Allah is.
Allah is. Julie, would you like to weigh in as well?
Yes, I thought it was interesting that Lydia brought up looking at, at communities that don't have this. I moved here from London and it was just a very diverse area. And it was kind of a rude awakening to move to Texas and, and see things aren't quite the same in other countries. and and see things aren't quite the same in other countries. But I think that we need to do a better job of utilizing our multicultural outreach roundtable. Their mission is to partner with the city council and cultural communities in Plano in order to encourage understanding and participation in the government process while fulfilling the needs and desires of its diverse citizens. I feel that the city council could do a better job of utilizing this organization as a partner to explore and research and make recommendations to council on ways in which we can promote racial reconciliation and social justice in our city. So I just like, we already have a great organization there in place and a lot of people that do devote a lot of time over the years to it. Let's 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 hear what they have to say and partner with them or be a better partner with them, I would say. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Julie. Vidal, would you like to weigh in next?
Yes, I'd like to weigh in next. I live in a very diverse neighborhood, so I honestly didn't feel any of this discrimination living here in Plano. But the minute I decided to run for city council, I immediately experienced the discrimination, the bullying, the silencing, the who are you, you have no right to run, that do you even belong and live in Plano environment? So I'm proud to say I'm still running. I am still going through this campaign. I'm going to take it all the way to the end. So I have experienced it here. Maybe running and running for city council opened up my eyes more than just my neighborhood. But I'm experiencing it now and it's not an easy thing to ever experience as an individual. And I do not want this on anyone. It's kind of sad that you have to kind of watch your steps and where you're going and keeping in the neighborhood you're going in as well too. So props to people and all of us who are experiencing this and still surviving and still pushing through. But I do want to say that it is time for Latino and a minority to have a seat at city council where our decisions are made for our city. We are a diverse community. We are diverse Plano residents and we all should have sound and a voice in Plano City Council. And our city council should reflect that. I do want to thank you for accepting me into the city, opening up your homes and trusting me to lead. I am Vidal Quintanilla and I'm sincerely asking you to go out and vote. Vote for the individual you represent, vote for the person you feel that will lead you and lead the best vision for you and vote.
All right. Thank you, Vidal. Anthony, if you'd like to weigh in next, please go ahead.
Thank you, Zain. I would I would love to weigh in on that question. My first few years of college, I had three Muslim roommates, including Shazab Ghazianni and Amr Sawani, who attend the the West Plano Masjid. So that gave me a unique window as a non-Muslim into the experience of Muslims. And I I do think that that racism is a real problem in our society and of course, not just here. As I mentioned earlier, I had the solemn privilege of speaking after Juma at the East Plano Islamic Center in the wake of the Christchurch massacre in New Zealand. And I shared that an attack on a place of worship is an attack on all of us. As everyone at Epic knows, you can see a a large American flag out the window at Epic. And I shared that that flag, to me, is a promise of freedom for everyone in our community, including the Muslim community. And you have my absolute commitment that I will protect the the rights, the religious freedom of everyone in the Muslim community. Dialogues are important. That's why I've attended so many events at Epic. And that's so important to me. In fact, that one time I was out of town and I actually sent my parents to an event at Epic. So they've been to the Masjid as well. But again, you know, partnering with the Muslim community is very important to me. My name is Anthony Riccadelli. It's a privilege to serve you on the city council and I humbly ask for your vote for reelection. Thank you.
All right.
Kawi.
Yes, you can weigh in next if you'd like to.
Yes, thank you so much because I need to go. Thank you. I really appreciate Epic for, you know, hosting this forum. It's such a great privilege to be here and to share my thoughts with you. I'm very honored to have received support from one, some of you got members, Khalid, Ishak and Akman Ghazi. They supported me last time when I ran for council and they still support me. As a, you know, minority woman, I have, you know, I want to just echo what Vidal has shared. Ever since I started running, I experienced, you know, this kind of just, how to say, you know, whether it's racism or whatever. But, you know, during the campaigns and, you know, we just have to rise above it. And I personally experienced it, you know, based on the country of origin, where I am from. But, you know, we are immigrants and, you know, like all of you, we work hard. We reach, you know, where we can reach. I have never expected that one day, as an immigrant, first generation immigrant, I would be able to run for mayor. But this is only possible that in an amazing and diverse city like Plano, I'm running because I'm running to protect us. My last name Baal means protect and preserve. I'm running to protect Plano, to be the city where religious freedom reigns. I wanted to help you so that we you can freely worship, just like I am. I I'm also, you know, faith, I have faith too. And I want that to be available for anybody, whether it's you or me. And please help me. I have a proven track record. I have lowered stop tax increases for you. I have limited high density. And I have voted funding for infrastructure, for police and fire in order to keep us safe. Thank you. I hope you vote for me, Lily Baal, Mayor, May 1st. Thank you.
All right. Well, Anthony and Lily, thank you so much for joining us. It was a pleasure hearing your responses and for taking and I really appreciate you guys taking time out of your schedules to come speak to us in our community. So thank you again. Feel free to leave if you need to.
Can I please?
Yeah, Nasa, I was going to give everyone else a chance to win. So Nasa, you can go ahead.
Okay. Like other people said, I never realized how important representation mattered until I started running. Being the only Muslim running in this entire Plano city council race and being young and a female, a triple minority, I've had a whole different experience. And 2017 with what former councilman Tom Harrison has said, that dialogue, it definitely hurt our community. And it's important, we also don't, we hold our leaders accountable. This includes not spreading this type of Islamophobic dialogue, but also not being passive about it either. It's also important that we don't have council members who behind the scene tell great community members, I don't know which god you believe to. That is also part of the systemic racism and it should never be normalized when people say to candidates like myself, you are not electable to hide their covert racism. That also needs to be acknowledged. So in order to do that, we need to change the system and we need to also elect leaders who represent that diverse representation as well. We need to elect more of our youth from diverse populations and our boards and commissions. And we need to have a good pathway for diverse leaders to run in council. And then at the same time, you know, we can go and do diversity research and listen to MLK videos all we want. But part of being about diversity means action. It means as a leader, that the minute you see a social justice issue happening in your city or your community, you use the platform you are given and you call it out and you acknowledge it. And sadly, you know, our some of our city leaders have been very passive. But that's also part of the alienation and why communities don't feel safe. And, you know, some people also argue that, oh, well, certain communities, they don't come out and vote. Well, it's important we give them a reason to. It's important that we don't just say that we are for diversity, but we act on them and we acknowledge them and we show them that they matter. And we don't enable this type of hatred or bigotry in any way possible.
All right. Thank you for weighing in, Nasa. Alisa, if you'd like to go next and give your response.
Yes, thank you. Appreciate that because I'll have to go too. But I see, I look at this as three things we need to do. We need to have outreach, communication and education. And that means, you know, exactly what other candidates have said, you engage the community. You talk to people. You acknowledge that when there are instances that happen, why are they happening? And you you do better. You train and you learn and you educate and you continue to have this conversation with people. I think that our elementary schools do a really good job of instilling like these great values to our kids. They have all kinds of programs. And for some reason, you know, that kind of stops in middle school and high school. So I'd like to look at, you know, things like that. Because all of this, what does it end up doing? It turns into bullying. And bullying is what turns into what, you know, the steps that that people take with when they're adults, with the biases that they they grew up with. So, you know, I think that looking at our younger people is important. But I also think exactly what some of the candidates have said in the past, of having a commissioner, a group of people that are able to sit around the table and look at these problems, talk, we have some great resources already. Let's utilize them. You know, I'm a minority as well. I'm from El Salvador. My parents brought us here when we were little. And so I understand what it feels like to be an outsider. I I've talked to high school students who of Asian descent who said, you know, they they feel like they can't even go out and walk outside. They they encourage their grandparents to stay indoors. So there's there's a level of uncomfortableness that our residents are experiencing and we need to help them with that. We need to have a voice. We need to have a resource for them to make them not feel that way. And we need to be inclusive. And I am proud to say that I have members of the Muslim community that have endorsed me. And, you know, I believe in the rights of of all people. And so I'm here to be a voice for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you so much again. And Nasa and Alisa, thank you so much for joining us and for giving us your time and taking time out of your busy schedules. We really appreciate you coming to us and speaking to our community and answering our questions. And David, I also want to give you a chance to weigh in on this question.
Okay, I also support the the type of commission that John first mentioned and Alisa just mentioned. And I'm open to whether that's a brand new commission or if we expand the charter of our multicultural outreach roundtable. We've been doing a lot of good things, but a lot of it's just, you know, becoming aware of diversity, becoming aware of the different cultures. We need to have conversations about the perspectives of the people within the the various groups. You know, I personally also got to live for several years in London and visited places like Singapore and others where it is a very different atmosphere than what we have here in North Texas. And also by marriage and by adoption, I'm I'm part of a multiracial, multi-ethnic family. So while I have not experienced some of the things Vidal, Nasa and others have firsthand, I have the the firsthand reports. You know, my my African American daughter tells me, you know, how different it is when she's out in public with me versus out in public, you know, by by yourself or worse with with a group of her black friends. So as I've said before, we we've got to start having the conversations, engage all elements of our community. And again, you know, the goal needs to be a community.
Seems like we've lost David, unfortunately. Candidates, I think that'll be the end of our candidate forum. It is, we went a little bit over time. Thank you so much all for joining us. Again, I appreciate everyone taking out the time of their busy schedules to speak to our community, answer our questions. And we had some engaging debate too during this candidate forum. So thank you so much for joining us. To the viewers at home, May 1st is election day. Early voting starts April 19th through April 24th from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM. And then April 26th through April 27th, early voting is 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. So again, candidates, thank you all so much for joining us. Take care to all the viewers at home. Please go vote. Turnout for municipal elections is very, very low, unfortunately low. And it is surprising how few people are engaged with local politics. And we encourage everyone that's part of the Epic community to go out and vote. Other than that, thank you so much. Take care, everyone. Stay healthy. Candidates, thank you so much again. Take care.
Thank you.